One minute.
I'm going. That's. Oh. Maybe less building it.
At least seventy degrees up hill. Yeah, the dog. They could see me and yeah, try the best you can.
Oh, my.
Listen, this.
Yeah.
Hey, can you guys hear me okay? Good. Hey, we'll call our city commission meeting to order at seven P M. June sixteenth twenty twenty five. Got a small crew, but we still have a quorum, so we'll start with our pledge of allegiance.
I'd like to be to the cry of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands. One nation underground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Alright, guys, first we got the minutes for June second. That was the regular commission meeting minutes and then the special commission meeting minutes for June fifth. Those look good to you guys? Need a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the minutes as posted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the minutes as posted. We'll move to a vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Commissioners report.
So I guess starting off with the streets side of it, uh, June eighth. Uh, asphalt preservation, they were able to get completed on the project, I guess. Um, we still have to finish striping. Um, unsure the timeframe of striping yet. We're still waiting on a few things. Um, but as soon as I know, we'll post something on Facebook. Um, it might be a couple of weeks, who knows, but if it does make the next commission meeting, I'll hopefully have a better date by then as well. Um. I guess in regards to the dog park up north, uh, be north of the hospital by the dam. Um, I guess I just asked the dog owners to please pick up your dog poop after you are completed walking your dog. There's been a lot of, uh. Dog droppings up there. Uh, city guys been getting a lot of, uh. Poop prior to them mowing, so just please be responsible and pick up your dog poop, uh, after you're done. Um. Uh, Josh did have his ten year anniversary with the P D. Uh, they did have a little party with them here on June. Second, I think, June third, something like that, right?
Last.
Last week, yeah, last Tuesday, so. Congrats to Josh on that. Um, in regards to. Oh, uh, the other items I have will be in, uh, new business. So I got thanks.
Everything I've been working on is kinda in the agenda, so. All I got.
Uh, yeah, same here. Um, the only thing that would be outside of what we're adding to the agenda or modifying the agenda with is we were supposed to talk with Brian Colbert tonight about that strip of land, the right of way in between him and Odegaard's. Um, I think what what we'll end up doing is I'll work with Liz. We'll put together a purchase order for that property. We'll bring that to the next commission meeting. That way you guys can look at it, ask questions. If you like it, we'll approve it. If not, we'll talk a little further, but that'll be the cleanest way of wrapping that up and and getting that behind us for them and the Odegaard's. Alright, so modifications or approval of the agenda. Um, I'll go first. Josh Reiner, um, does have some material to cover, so I'd like to throw him at number three under old business. Um. Jayden, you have an employee that reached their ninety day probationary period, so there's a request to increase their pay based off of that. Um, throw that under new business. Um, the police department has that job posting that we approved to advertise last meeting. Um, that term expired. It expired. What was it? The fourteenth? Comes up on the twenty first, so we're gonna want to extend that for another period, right? Two week period-ish?
Correct.
Okay.
Let's say that one more time, please.
Sure.
Um, the police department, Josh requested that we advertise for another police officer and the the period where that advertisement ran through has been expired this weekend, so we need to readvertise. And we've got some fireworks dates. Kyle reminded me that our next meeting is after the fourth of July, so I wanted you guys to look at those. I will shoot out some proposed dates sometimes for extended fireworks. Then, lastly, there'd be during the chip sealing process, we had a a homeowner, um, have a pickup and camper that got plastered with tar. So I'm hoping to talk with you guys about that and maybe getting somebody in to help rectify that. And then, just to clean everything up, since we're adding a lot, I'd like to take eight through fourteen and throw that all under the consent agenda. I've looked through all the applications and stuff. It's really routine stuff. I don't think we need to to vet every single one of them. Um, if you guys have any questions on any of them, we can always discuss those, you know? So engineer report is three. Um, we'll go ninety day as old business number or new business number eight. Um, police job posting is nine. Fireworks data is ten and damaged property as eleven. For new business.
Here's a one.
Oh, yeah. And then we have a. We have a. Lush, Dan, how do we wanna put that? A rezoning record down the street, so we'll we'll go number twelve with rezoning a parcel.
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda with the modifications of adding, um, Josh Reiner, uh, the promotion recommendation, um, Josh with the P D fireworks, um, the chip seal accident. And moving eight through fourteen down to the consent agenda.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve the modified agenda. Any other questions on that? Move to a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries. Uh, old business, Liz, you're up.
Hey, can everybody hear me?
Yeah.
Okay, very good. I will be very brief. Um, I guess I will echo what Brett said. I wanted to be sure that Mr. Coburg didn't think we forgot about him. We didn't forget about you, sir, if you're in the room this evening. Um, Dan did, uh, supply to us, you know, some of those records that were requested. Um, Brett and I will sit down and review those and and share, uh, the necessary documentation to proceed forward however the commission should wish in coming meetings. Um, kinda with Kyle and Jayden on the balance. If you guys need me for any other matters that present on tonight's agenda, I promise I'm listening and I'm here. Um, but in the interest of time, that's all I have to say this evening at this point.
Yeah, guys, questions for Liz? Good. Okay, moving on. Community center update.
Good evening. I'm David with F C X instructors for the construction. But, uh, so currently we are ninety two percent complete. Basketball court and track is complete. Car carpet and rubber base is complete. Um, division ten, which be toilet partitions accessories are complete. Wood doors have been installed. As you can see outside, site concrete and asphalt is complete. This week we're gonna start topsoiling and, uh, hopefully early next week we'll start with landscaping, which is by owner. We are doing startup on our mechanical equipment this week. Next, next week we will be doing test and balance. And that mechanically equipment. Later on. Hopefully, early July, they'll do the load test on generator. That'll be all wrapped up. And then punch list is tentatively scheduled for July first. That might move week or whatever. I mean, it's just kind of what we're tentatively scheduled there. And I know more furniture is moving in the last week of July. So. We are nearing the end. Questions?
And I'll be calling you probably next weekend doing a walkthrough, lush, getting punchless going.
Sure. That'll work. Sweet.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. I have the paper quest number eleven in front of me for the amount of one million, two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and one penny.
Said that was payoff number eleven?
Yep.
Make a motion to approve payoff number eleven.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve payout number eleven. Any discussion on that? Okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries.
You.
Yeah.
Alright, Mr. Reiner, you are up.
Yes, good evening. Thank commissioners. Um, few items to, uh, run through this evening. Uh. On the, uh, third street northwest and North Hanson Street reconstruction project. Um, I had mentioned this, uh, couple of meetings ago, but, uh, the, uh, just a reminder of the correction period walkthrough that's scheduled for Tuesday next week, the twenty-fourth at ten A M. Um. Beyond that. The next item I have is the former status update. Um, waiting on the, uh, approval from FEMA to send out the notices to the, uh, properties or owners of properties that, uh, that are within the area being remapped. Um, we do have the notices drafted and that's part of, uh, part of what they review as well. Um, so we have that have that ready and I guess upon their approval, we'll we'll get that sent over. Um, to Wendy along with the, uh, um, mailing list, uh, so that those can be mailed out and then we can provide provide them notice that that, uh, step of the process is completed. Um, and then in a few weeks of that, uh, we should be able to, um, uh, anticipate, uh, information from them pertaining to forward with with construction there. Um, any questions on that topic? Okay. Um, I guess one one other, uh, item that came up, uh, uh, crossed my mind, uh, actually Dan had mentioned it to me earlier today. Um, the, uh, reseeding that we've talked a couple of times on for the northeast, uh, Tyoga reconstruction project. Um, I know that was kinda part of part of the, uh, payment that was withheld from Strata and there's been further correspondence with them, uh, since since that time, but just wanted to, uh, keep that in front of everyone. I don't know if Liz has heard any further updates potentially, um, from them, uh, in regards to and a path forward with that project, but, uh, you know what? The intent was that the city would, uh, kinda hire someone separately at that time, but there's been further correspondence with them, so I wanted to make sure that's.
I can let you know, Josh, I don't mean to interrupt. I can let you know that I have been in communication with their council. Um, we sent to them the additional documentation that was discussed during the meeting. Um, Riley has has not gotten back with me at this point, but I can follow up on that particularized issue if that's helpful.
Okay, yeah, that that'd be great, just, uh, um, see if we can get that get that component taken care of so we don't drag it out in another another construction season, hopefully, so. Great, thank you.
Gosh, I'm totally comfortable with us taking care of that ourselves. You guys good with that?
Yeah, I guess I was gonna ask, I mean, I thought we said before that we're gonna be just taking care of that, and I guess I'm not sure the understanding why they're still involved with it.
They're not. He's asking if we've. Well, he's saying we need to get it done because that was a component on the the shortfall payment. So what I'm asking is, can we just handle the hydro seating ourselves? Get the contractor, get bids, do all that, knock it out.
Legal answer, guys, if you wish, you can. Um, just so you know, Kyle, I know Brett was in on that meeting. Really what's being discussed there is value to be assigned to that. They're on notice. Josh properly noticed them by letter. We certainly noticed them during subsequent meetings and correspondence. If the city wishes to get it done, that's fine. We'll just haggle over the value later.
And what I'm getting at is, we talked about this when there was snow on the ground and it still hasn't gotten done, so do we wanna just get it done? Yep, okay.
Yeah, I think that's the best course of action.
Alright, thanks, Josh. Uh, moving on to new business, uh, guys, this one's yours. You put all the legwork into that, um, gravel road repair.
So in regards to gravel roads around Tyoga, um, there's a few of them that are completely atrocious, to say the least. Um. One of them being South Front Street is really bad and Sixty Seventh Street is really bad as well. Um, so speaking with Jayden, um, we went out and we got some quotes in regards to some gravel. Um, hauled in, we got a quote from Rock Resources. We also got a quote from Sun Hagen Sand and Gravel. Um, and then we also made a few phone calls in regards to, uh, blade gentleman that lives close by, Mr. Barry Gramberg. Um, and he gave us a quote for his portion of it. So we're looking to get some gravel thrown on starting with South Front Street and Sixty Seventh Street. Um. If there's any leftover gravel, um, leftover time, things of that nature, we'll proceed with other gravel roads. Um, but those two are main focus for right now. Um, get them up to shape. Uh, I know the edges of the curbs of the streets are really high, so those off be pulled in. Um, just so water will run off the roadway and it won't pool with water and mud and just a mess. So. That's what this quote is for. Um. In regards to Sun Hagen Sand and Gravel is the cheapest to be, uh, delivered. Um, with thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars even that was delivered uh, to location. And then Rock Resources was thirty-eight thousand, six hundred and forty dollars. So that's kinda what we're looking at. Guess Jayden, you wanna have anything?
No, not really. I mean, they're they're pretty, they're pretty comparable in price, so I mean, either one would be fine. They're both right there, so I mean. Um, unless, uh. Unless, what do you think, Barry? You got got a preference?
Much are you thinking? How, you know, how many yards are you talking about for, like, say, just for Sixty Seventh Street?
This is for, is it for sixty, sixty loads?
Yeah, so the quotes for sixty loads is all we got.
So I'm thinking at at minimum on Sixty Seventh. I'm thinking probably at minimum. Uh, but probably about forty of that would be thirty-five or forty of that would probably be for Sixty Seventh.
Well, I I was curious as to, you know, because it they they'll have, uh, triples and, you know, um, bellies, I would assume, or because if they if they have to, if they're gonna use side dumps, if I have to be there while they're dumping. Or can they just spread it and then I'll come in after the fact and blade it or because I mean, that that's, because if I gotta sit and, you know, if I'm there while they're dumping that.
Yeah, well.
My time, um.
Probably didn't get too specific with that when you called them, did you, Kyle? Um, but I, as as far as as far as it stands with me, they'll have to use bellies and spread it.
Well, I I would I would prefer that. I would prefer it spread because that way I wouldn't have to be there the whole time and traffic can still maintain.
Yeah.
Um. I was just driving through there and Sixty Seventh is, yeah, you know, we could dress it up, try to dress it up as best a guy can, you know, but it's really just dirt and rock, right? But, uh, that front street down there by the tracks. Now, I I see you've molded it. Um. I would, I myself, I would prefer just give me a little time. I'll pull the shoulders up and right, I'll grind it up and work it back and forth and we get kind of a shake to it before the gravel, because this is well used, the dirt you got, because it's cheaper, you know, and so I would, uh, I don't know if you wanna split them two jobs apart or if they're just, you know, I mean, they they can be, you could approve them both as far as I'm concerned, but one Sixty Seventh would be the first would be that's first on the list, I would assume, right?
Yeah, I'd I'd like to start with Sixty Seventh because Alan's by far the worst.
And then.
But we'll break, we could break it up into.
Right, right, but just give me a day or two or something to work on that front road and you can just will try to build a, you know, shape the road with the dirt you have before we put gravel down. And is there um, Sixty Seventh, is there any time, you know, like when I when I'm doing it, you know, I'm gonna I'll be digging up some rock and stuff, uh, uh, you guys got it? Are you guys gonna pick them or do I have to?
Uh, we we.
I prefer you did.
Yeah, we we can get someone out there and and to assist with that, to make your life easier. That way you're actually.
I don't have a rock picker, but I I know some people, but you know, that will just be more of an expense.
We'll take care of that.
Shop is right there. I mean, it's, you know, and it ain't gonna be like we're not gonna dig up a whole rock pile, right? It's just, mm-hmm, you know, you never know how big they are until you pluck them out of the ground, so. Um. Traffic, is that gonna be an issue? Um, I mean, because I I I don't do traffic control either. I'm just, all I'm gonna do is just blade it. Everything else is um, that'll be your guys' problem.
Well, we will, we will probably have to figure something out.
Well, I mean, it it, well, it's why, I mean, it's it's if you can't get around me on that road, by God, you ain't trying very hard.
I'm just thinking about the spreading.
Well, that that's gonna.
Because, uh, you know, there when they spread that.
Be doing about.
When they spread it, they're gonna have to be doing about twenty-five mile an hour and they're gonna have to be in the center of the road, so I don't know how to, but we should try to limit traffic on that road that day. If possible.
I guess it's kinda what I was thinking is, is if we can basically from Main Street and one direction, they should kinda close it off.
Well, he close, but yeah, he closed Main Street.
And then once we get the one way, you know, switch traffic the other way.
Rock Resources and that, you know, and in your guys' shop, I mean, Continental Mirix, I mean, can hardly, you know.
It's not them access.
As long as we can probably limit, like.
Yep.
Regular civilian traffic.
And you're fine. You're talking more from Main Street to the west and then Main Street to the east. Do them in sections that way?
Yeah, I was figured, you know, we could split it from Main Street would be the halfway point and you know, you work on the one half and then once that's polished up, then we can basically kind of switch traffic around and and they coming from the other direction per se and, you know, Mirix and Continental, they're not quite Main Street, but we, you know, we can make it work.
Right, right, and I just, I there was just some quite, you know, I mean, I wanted, I just wanted to make sure is I'm just supplying the blade, so it's if there's, uh, other issues that's.
We'll, uh, like I said, we'll make sure we're in contact with Kirk and and the guys and between pickarocks, some traffic control, some signage, things like that. Um, like I said, it's it's gonna be a little bit of a a pain, but it'll be nice when it's done.
Road, road, road work is always a pain until.
It's wide enough. It shouldn't. It won't hurt when you're.
If you can't get around me, you're not trying very hard, because, I mean, the the road's forty plus feet wide, you know? I'm only sixteen, so. But, uh, um. When, when that gets finished and we'll move on to that front street. If front street doesn't take as much as we're thinking, because is we just gonna use the remainder back onto Sixty Seventh then? Because, well, when I talk to you, I mean, I did fifteen hundred yards is, I mean, that ain't out of the question. You know, it's 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 a huge road, right? You know, it'll be you know, that thick. Not hardly cover up some of the rocks that are sticking out.
Yeah.
Uh, and you, do you have a water truck or anything? So, no, um.
Yeah, we we got plenty of water. Right? That's definitely not a problem there.
Yeah, so if there is any leftover, I guess we'll just we probably will go back over Sixty Seventh with whatever's left if there's like a light spot or whatever.
Yeah, probably. The. Um. You're, this is, this is all set up for dust control, right?
Yeah, so the dust control will be put on here later. That'll be approved tonight or I'll be proposed tonight, I should say.
But I mean, it it should be, you you want that road dressed up as best as it can be be prior, you know, right, right ahead of the dust control.
Correct, and and that's one thing that that, um, I'll talk to Braun that we're gonna completely hold off until we're all the way done with the roads.
Mm-hmm.
And then we'll put dust control on. That way we're not putting dust control on above your road.
Well, that. That would be preferable, yes. Alright, well, I just, like I said, I just wanted to know what, you know, what you were thinking about traffic and rocks.
Yeah, you know, I'm just, I'm thinking, um, which obviously we'll probably have to re- reach back out to them, but I would assume they'll be using belly dumps and spreading it. If not, I'm really not.
Side, I mean, sides work too, but you have to be there while they're dumping it, and if I gotta be there the whole time, well, then that's more my time, so. Yeah, I mean, it'd be better if it was just spread and then others come in and dress it up afterwards, but.
Is there a written procedure in your policy book? Or?
This this the project like this going out for.
See, I don't have one. I'd recommend you guys create and lean on somebody like Barry for the next piece, step by step.
Oh, that's all. I I just wanted to touch on a few things about any traffic and rock and whatnot.
Mm-hmm, yep. Thanks for looking out. Alright, guys, what do you wanna do?
I'll make a motion to approve Son Hagen Sand and Gravel's quote for, uh, thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the quote from Son Hagen Sand and Gravel in the amount of thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and sixty bucks.
Yes.
Vote.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um. Before we move on.
Hang on, or we we have, we have one more left to do the Blade Man quote to.
Okay.
And with that, um, being that we don't really know exactly how long it's gonna take them, we'll probably just do a uh, not to exceed price. Um, the price, it's gonna be around two hundred dollars per hour, but you know, obviously it's gonna take like four or five days in total to do all this in different stages, so, um, looking for an approval. An approval um for Barry to come in and blade the road, uh not to exceed ten thousand dollars.
That, is that gonna be enough, being so we don't know for sure what type of trucks they're offloading with and. I mean, it's 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 a not to exceed, so we can go higher if if we don't get charged that, we don't get charged that. Well, let's let's bump it up fifty percent, if we use it, we use it, if we don't, we don't, that's.
Fifteen thousand, okay, yep, all right, well, I'll make a motion to approve um. Having Barry Rambird blade the road for this project, um not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars.
I second that.
All right, we got a motion in a second to approve the quote from Barry Rambird not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars, move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion carries, um what I was saying is, it's. Odd for a couple commissioners to take a project like that by themselves, do all the homework, line everything up and. Get it from start to finish, so. Good job, guys, it's a, it's a new trend that I'd like to continue. All right, we messed up, I messed up, um. The police job posting extension, that was technically. It was new business last time, so it's old business now, so we need to run through that.
Okay.
We'll just need a a motion to approve the the re-advertising or extending the advertisement to Kyle, what did we decide? The July fifth, gosh, does that sound?
Yeah, so it ends the twenty first and we wanna extend it to July fifth.
Cause it'll be published again on the twenty first, right?
Yeah, you know, from my experience uh here, I don't know that I would put a cap on that. Uh personally, I would like to maybe see that position posted open until filled. Uh this way, when we get applicants and we don't have to worry about um. The conclusion of a deadline before we can start interviewing to fill these spot, this spot, I mean, it's incredibly important, we try to fill this. The spot as soon as possible.
Okay, so how are candidates gonna know when the positions filled? Are you gonna call everybody that applied and let them know you're either A, not interviewing them, or B, you filled it with someone else?
I think the best practice in this case would be to uh those that would qualify or we feel would. Meet the needs of the city, extend an interview to those, those that are uh have applications that are incomplete or. Uh would not be considered worthy of interviewing, we just send them thanks but no thanks letters uh as we vet them.
Okay, so we're looking at making a motion to advertise for a police police officer position without. An expiration date, right?
Right. I make a motion to approve, uh make a. Job posting for the PD for patrol officer until the position is filled.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the re-advertising for a police officer position until the position is filled. With any discussion on that, sound good, Josh?
It is, yeah.
Okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
And the motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right, moving on to the Linda Street hydrant.
Actually, it'd be dust control.
We are on, it's all over the place before. And sixty seventh street dust control quote.
So we, in regards to dust control for the gravel streets or gravel roads around town, um Braun normally comes and does that work. Um got a quote from them this year again, nineteen thousand three hundred dollars. Uh for putting uh magnesium chloride um on the roadways, um that's the same price as last year. Um so I like to get that put on the road after uh there is. Uh bladed them.
Uh with that too, um were you able to get a water truck lined up before we lay that chloride down too?
Uh I never was able to talk to Trig, but um I know the fire department has plenty of water, so we'll get some worked out.
Okay, yep, cause uh I got advice from Barry that he thinks. If you put a little water down before the dust control, uh that helps it kinda.
Oh, we do this, we do this every year out at our plants that work, and if you uh if you don't. Spray water down before throwing the mag chloride down, it gets all clumpy like cat litter and it really doesn't do anything, so. Super important, but it's ultra smooth, it's exactly the way you want it, a little bit wet, spray the mag chloride and you're good to go.
Anyway, just thought I'd add that.
Like it.
I make a motion to approve Braun's quote for nineteen thousand three hundred dollars for dust control, I'll second.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve the quote from Braun Trucking in the amount of nineteen thousand three hundred? Hello?
Yes.
Yes, the motion carries. Now, we're on to the Linda Street hydrant, Kyle, I know you're all over this one.
Yeah, so in regards to uh the property two 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 Linda Street North. Uh the property owner called me, um Tyler Judkins would be the uh resident. Um so he's looking at building a garage onto his home. And there's a fire hydrant that's gonna be right in the driveway of that garage. Um so he's looking to move the hydrant south, not to exceed forty feet. Um I did speak with Josh Reiner in regards to that, to get some uh ordinances. Um he looked into it and the state of North Dakota um spells out what can be. Uh as far as hydrant locations, um and this does fit the spacing. Um it's normally between three fifty and six hundred depending upon the area that it's serving. So um this hydrant moving south forty feet is gonna be around that two hundred and fifty feet. So we're well within our parameters of uh safe. Uh ordinances for fire suppression for homes, um there is a picture that is attached. There are three hydrants relatively close, like I said, within two hundred and fifty feet. Um of all them residences, so uh Mr. Judkins. Would be the one that would be footing the bill for this uh moving of the hydrant, and this city would not pay anything for that. So that's what this um is asking, I guess.
You just need a motion to approve moving our hydrant forty feet, is that what you're looking for?
Correct. I'll make a motion to approve the moving of that hydrant forty feet to the south, right?
Correct, to south. I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second for our fire hydrant um relocation on Linda Street. Any discussion, okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion carries. All right, next up, we got a CD proposal, I for the life of me cannot find that, I hope you've got it.
Yeah, I got some info on it, so. The last meeting, um we had an expiring CD that we rolled into a new one, um. But got to thinking, um. When we were working on that, I was kinda thinking that um maybe we'd like to throw a little more in a CD, being said, the rates are. Decent, I mean, they're they're better than than just sitting in the, sitting in the. Checking account, so we might as well uh try to make a little money on it. Um so. The bank was reached out to and the rate on a six month CD is at uh three point two six right now. So it's just uh a matter of. How much we wanna put in, I don't recommend doing any more than a six month. Dollar wise, um. I think we should dedicate at least five million. I think we could even do ten, but five's probably. Lot more comfortable of a number, um I guess, what are your guys' thoughts?
Well, we don't, we don't have any projects to carry us out through the rest of the year, that nothing significant anyway. Um Wendy, what do you think?
I think we should be comfortable with putting ten million in there.
Yep, no, while I'm trying to log in, what we have, or. Yeah. So we got twenty three. We still have to pay off the original community center loan, right? That's what, two point eight?
Yep.
We've got to transfer funds to First State Bank for the community center um construction account.
Yeah, that'll be three million.
Seventeen, you put ten. Please us with a little. Comfortable with it, though.
Still kinda have a project going, the dam project's still going, uh how are we looking at what that's gonna be? Where that's at, I guess, would be the only.
It could be anywhere from what, one point eight to three and a half, right? Well, maybe we oughta just do five.
Yeah, I'm I'm good with that, like I said, I'm flexible to whatever, um five million's good with me.
Okay, well, I'll make a motion um that we throw five million into a. A six month CD. Um at three point two six percent um at the Bank of Tyoga.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to acquire a CD, um at five million dollars, at an interest rate of three point two six. At the Bank of Tyoga, sound good? Okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries, and then number seven would be the construction fund transfer to First State Bank and Trust. Um you guys know, we've been pay ops to FCI, that account has been dwindling. We need to make a transfer back into that account from our our general checking, correct, Wendy? What were you guys looking at for dollar amount?
It needs to be three million.
Okay, so you are looking. Three million from the Bank of Tyoga to First State Bank and Trust.
Yep. So I'll make the motion to approve um the transfer of. Uh three million dollars from our general in the Bank of Tyoga to the construction account at First State Bank.
I second that.
Hey, we have a motion in a second to approve the transfer of three million dollars from our general checking account at Bank of Tyoga. To the construction account at First State Bank and Trust. Okay, move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion carries. All right, we are firework dates, so normally I would just.
Well.
Well, again.
Yeah. Um promotion recommendation.
Yeah, yeah, glad you're here tonight, cause I'm definitely not. All right, so our newest addition at the community center, her ninety day probationary period is. I guess it's here and gone, um. I do wanna talk about that a little bit, just give me a chance to look this up. Okay, so the the pay increase recommendation is from eighteen eighty an hour to nineteen thirty eight an hour. Which I think is great, and that's fine, that that's in line with our step schedule. The only thing I see is it's a backdated effective date, it's effective June seventh. Last time we talked about this sort of stuff, we decided like after these increases were approved, it would take into effect the next pay period, which would be. Today, so. I personally would like the effective date dated for today, so we don't have to to work on. Uh you know, going backwards on payroll.
Yeah, I know, that sounds, that sounds good, so. Well, I'll make the motion to approve the uh promotion and raise recommendation. With uh the modification of. The effective date um being June sixteenth instead of June seventh.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the promotion and ra- raise recommendation with the modification. Um that the effective date is on June sixteenth, which is today versus June seventh. Okay, we'll move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion carries. Do I dare try to move on to the next one? All right, so fireworks date, as I was saying, normally the commission president just. Writes a letter, approves extended firework dates, I would like you guys involved on this, um. Last year, we went Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday from twelve PM to one AM on Thursday, Friday and Saturday. Sunday, it was one PM to eight PM. So this year, if we follow suit with last year, um it would be the third, fourth, fifth and sixth. Um twelve PM to one AM, the third, fourth and fifth, the sixth would be one PM to eight PM. You guys wanna leave it like that, add days, take away days, everything look good?
Think I'm okay with it, staying like it is, I guess. What were the timeframes again?
So the third was twelve PM to one AM, the fourth twelve PM to one AM, the fifth. Twelve PM to one AM, and the sixth would be one PM to eight PM. And this is just to make it um so it's allowed to set off legally purchased fireworks during those times.
Yeah, that sounds good to me, so I'll make a motion to approve them dates and times as posted.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve the fireworks rule for twenty twenty five, um move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
The motion carries, um. Just last for new business, um. During our chip sealing project, um I I talked with a gentleman and. It, I mean, it was windy when when we laid the final little pass of tar and. He has a truck and he has a camper and he was sure to move everything off the street and onto his property before they went on vacation. Um they got back from vacation and found one side of both just plastered with tar. He he made an attempt to clean it up, thank goodness, this is the only instance I've heard so far. But I would like, I guess your guys' blessing, a motion of some sort to bring someone in, Minot Williston, to attempt detailing it. Before he's gotta haul it and see if the claim needs to be made. Um the reason I ask if we can bring someone from out of town in is it's camping season. He's probably gonna wanna use his camper, he's not gonna wanna drag his fifth wheel to Minot and let it sit for the whole summer as they clean it up, so. It's gonna be a little out of the norm, I don't know how much it's gonna cost, but I'm definitely willing to try it, cause it's a really unfortunate situation. So I don't know what that motion even needs to look like, if just a- approve a an outside detailing company to come in. At a not to exceed amount, if it looks like it needs to come in higher, I mean, we'll we'll have to revisit that. I mean, we'll we'll have to revisit that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, what do you, what do you think the price should be?
Well, again, the the nice part of the not to exceed is most of the time, you're never gonna hit that target, you're gonna be well below it, so I would think five thousand dollars would should cover it if it's due home.
Yeah, oh, their signs weren't put on his street, uh there's signs all over town taking vehicles off street.
He he did, he took everything off the street, he was up in his yard with his camper and his pickup. It was just the wind.
It just got that windy, it still made it to his driveway, unfortunately, yeah.
Open like like thirty feet, twenty feet from him.
Oh, mine.
Yeah.
Oh, mine, yeah.
It was, it was pretty wild the day that they they sprayed it.
Fortunately, that's thing well that you heard of anyways.
It's the only one so far.
Okay, well, I will move, um permission for you to go out and look uh for an outside detailing company to come in and fix that for him um with a not to exceed price of five thousand dollars.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve an outside company to come in and detail this guy's property, um in the amount not to exceed five thousand dollars. Any other discussion on that? It's a, it's a pile of money, I get it, but it's a lot of surface area when you're looking at a super duty and a fifth wheel, and who knows? That's, that's my only reason for hoisting that number up there. Okay, move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries. All right. Um while we were modifying the agenda, we moved special event liquor license permit.
Right, should we talk about that rezone first? Yeah.
You should probably you should probably explain this, I got a really, really quick overview of it. Good luck, I'm struggling tonight.
Yeah, um so there is a duplex that is in the process of being sold over here on First Street, uh two fourteen, two sixteen, and back in two thousand eleven, giving you a little bit of a history, the they rezoned that lot only to an R two A, which allows for a duplex. Um it was an R one zone, right across from the alley was an R two A. So it made sense, everything, you know, flowed, you know, to go ahead and do the zoning there. And so that was approved in two thousand eleven. Um and I can't remember what year it was that the unit was built, I think if it was twelve or fourteen, thirteen?
Yeah, it was really close to after eleven. I mean, it 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 happened quick after we.
It was prob- probably sometime two thousand, a year later or or so, uh anyway, it doesn't matter, anyway, um he built it per plan of what was apparently proposed to what was gonna go on there, while in the ordinance, it shows that the size of a lot a minimum size of square footage for a a lot to, you know, to be able to put a duplex on, and which is at that time was eight thousand square feet lot. This lot is a seventy by a hundred foot lot, seven thousand square feet. So that was a a little minor detail that got overlooked, didn't get noticed at that time, and um now when the appraiser and the bank is involved, they want their Ts and Is crossed and all that stuff dotted. So they just want to have some kind of a uh a variance or some kind of a statement that would say that they can rebuild if there was a fire or damage destruction to the property, that they are able to rebuild it as to its existing or current size. Um you know, just for their insurance, you know, bank loan protections and all that.
You need a variance, a statement would not be sufficient in all likelihood, and the owner or purchaser just needs to fill out an application for variance, those are issued under the ordinance.
Yeah. I mean, the variance would be the proper thing to go with, um but there is, they they do have they did not get back with me, but they were urgent and trying to get all this documentation in line for the closing, and I do not know when the closing is, um so I'm not sure what what we can do or what they can do or what they're gonna have to do, I don't know.
Well, I think Liz answered that for you, they're gonna have to get a variance and you know, I would love to just verbally give them
Yeah.
Oh, or whatever, like god forbid their house burns down, you can rebuild it the same size it is, even though it's over the threshold for our ordinance, but
Well, it it.
I also, I also know how compounding mistakes happen and what that looks like, and I think if we did the whole verbal thing, we're gonna be right back in the same boat someday, I hope not, but yeah, I don't, I don't know what to do to help them other than we just gotta follow the process.
Yep, so so uh I mean, yeah, we can, I can communicate that with them and uh they're just gonna have to deal with it. Because that is, I'd rather go the right way and do it right as much as we can and as long as we know it, you know, to be right. You know, so I just wanted to bring that to our attention, um and I guess hopefully there.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want them to have to deal with this, I think we need to deal with it really quickly for them, so whatever we need to do, let's do it quick.
And there should be forms that exist for an application for a variance, we've done those in the past, if they fill that out and get it to planning and zoning, um and planning and zoning can look at it promptly and transmit it to the commission, this commission has been quite good about conducting special meetings, I don't wanna speak for them, but um we have an application for that, so.
Right, and I believe, I believe we can do a, you know, the planning zoning, we could request a special meeting, and then maybe possibly if we, if I get on this right away tomorrow, there is a public notice period, and I believe it's one week, I might be wrong, it might be two weeks, but I think it's one week, so if that's the case, then by next commission meeting, we we could probably have this resolved.
Yep, sounds good.
If the neighbors are able to to disagree with the variance.
Great.
Right.
That's where the public notice comes into play, yeah. But the building's already built.
Yeah, you can show up at a at a, at a hearing, the public notice will indicate a hearing date, which will be the same day as the zoning commission hears the matter. Um and the public and neighbors actually have a right of protest, as Dan indicated, I don't wanna speak for the zoning board, but if the building's already up that gets to be a little bit trickier, but certainly that right of protest exists in a notice situation.
Guys, what do you think, wrapping up? So the consent agenda consists of the pledge holdings for May twenty twenty five, payroll for six twenty 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 five, June bills, the special event liquor license permit, gaming site authorization, liquor license renewal applications, and then four planning and zoning applications, one for Wade Bale, NBN Indy, and then Bright Meadow Investments.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I will second that, but we probably need to make amendment saying that with the special liquor license, which option we want? Option number one is under the tent and option two is outside of the tent by the model. So I would say option two.
Okay, let's, let's pull that one out. Um pull that one up, so let's keep it separate and then do the consent agenda for the rest of them. Okay, so special event liquor license, this is for Freedom Fest, um same process we went through last meeting, we had option one under the tent, option two outside the tent, we went with option two. We wanna stay consistent, right?
Yeah, correct, I'd I'd make a motion to approve option two um outside the tent for the special liquor license for the Model Tavern.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve option two for the special liquor license for the Model Tavern. Questions on that? Move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries, and then the balance of the consent agenda.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I second that.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to approve the consent agenda. Questions on any of that? Move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Okay, motion carries. Eight o'clock sharp, do you guys have anything? Anybody? For Carabelle? Good job on the chip sealing project, looks great, a lot of compliments. And we'll need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn, I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion in a second to adjourn, move to a vote?
Yes, yes.
Open carries, we are adjourned at eight PM.
Thanks, guys.
Thanks, Liz.